This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education Public Meeting for January 3rd, 2023. Happy New Year and welcome to Twelve Corners Middle School. This is the fourth of our school visits that we do throughout the school year, and we are excited to be in the TCMS library, a really bright and fun space. To begin with, and there's probably not a better way to begin any meeting or any year with the Brighton Believer Award, so I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan.
Thanks so much, Mr. Davis. As we've said before, but it bears repeating, the Brighton Believers Council selected nominees to receive Brighton Believers Award at their previous meetings, and we have not forgotten about those. We continue to recognize folks at the beginning of each of our meetings for demonstrating our character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. These award winners are students, parents, teachers, and staff members, but are also open to parents, coaches, and community members. And the nomination, of course, is available on the website at bcst.org. I'll refrain from singing Aretha Franklin, who I think that Bill reminded us was inducted in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and clearly demonstrated respect to one of our bright believers. This evening's award winner that we're recognizing is an incredible teacher here at Twelve Corners Middle School and does so much in our school community. If I could ask Jessica Padilla and Susanna Ferries to come on up. Susanna recommended nominated Jessica so that she can be thoroughly acknowledged right up here. Jessica is a science teacher at Twelve Corners Middle School. She was nominated by Heather Coles and Susanna Ferries, and thank you for coming tonight. They wrote, "Jessica has dedicated countless hours to the Brighton Summer Arts Program, making it one of the most desirable summer programs for elementary schoolchildren across the entire Rochester community. Jessica treats each student in that program with respect and provides structure in a firm routine coupled with significant encouragement and fun." Mrs. Padilla is also one of the best teachers in the district. During 7th grade science, she uses current technology to keep the kids excited and engaged. Mrs. Padilla communicates consistently with parents and provides extra support and guidance. She's always available and follows up about interpersonal connections and concerns with the students. Most importantly, in the context of this award, Jessica Padilla commits herself fully to the Brighton community. She is an advocate for school and community opportunities for those living in Brighton. She is always kind and compassionate. She respects and embraces individual differences and has the rare gift of creating community among a variety of stakeholders. I will say to you that it has been a pleasure observing Jessica over the years as a teacher, as a person who invests herself in kids in the performing arts, not just during the summer, but during the year as well, puts on these incredible performances, choreographs those, and pours everything she has into it, but also has a knack as a professional of knowing when people need a note, a message, and seems to set out intentionally to brighten people's day. Thank you very much for all you do in our community, Jessica. Congratulations. Thanks. You gotta take home the actual award. Congratulations. You bet. Dean's gonna take our picture? It's up to you. There's not one you're taking.
I know, but it's so pretty. Look at that.
Do you want all of them go back?
Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations, Jessica. Hearing about our Brighton Believers Award recipients is, as I said before, a great way to start the meeting and, in this case, start the new year. Speaking of recognition, we are thrilled and proud to announce that Brighton Central School District Superintendent Dr. Kevin McGowan is one of four finalists for the AASAs, that's the School Superintendent's Association, 2023 National Superintendent of the Year Award. This distinction honors school system leaders throughout the country who are making a positive difference in the lives of the students they serve, the staff they work with, as well as improving the safety and wellness of their school communities. Earlier this year, Dr. McGowan was selected by the New York State Council of School Superintendents as the New York State Superintendent of the Year. The 2023 National Superintendent of the Year will be announced during AASA's National Conference on Education on February 16th in San Antonio, Texas. Christina, you shouldn't assume that everyone is familiar with the award or the criteria, so I'll ask you to explain.
Yes, of course I will explain. The National Superintendent of the Year Program is now in its 36th year. The applicants were measured against the following criteria: Leadership for learning, creativity, and successfully meeting the needs of students in the school system; Communication, strength in both personal and organizational communication; Professionalism, constant improvement of administrative knowledge and skills while providing professional development opportunities and motivation to others on the education team; Community involvement, active participation in local community activities, and an understanding of regional, national, and international issues. Dr. McGowan has done an outstanding job for Brighton, putting the needs of our students first, constantly connecting with staff and our entire community, and proactively taking on tough issues. Brighton has benefited from his always positive attitude, his daily focus on how schools can be better, and his collaborative approach with an equally outstanding leadership team and teaching staff. Dr. McGowan is more than deserving of this recognition, and we look forward to continuing to work with him and the entire BCSD team to create the best possible learning environment for our students, staff, and community. So on behalf of the school board and this entire community, congratulations to Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for reading that exactly how my mother wrote it. She should be very proud.
Yeah, we emailed her too.
There's no question in my mind about that. I, um, it happens because of everybody sitting in the back and our staff, who have closed gaps for kids, and that is really what that's about. So I appreciate that, but more so, I appreciate what has happened for kids in this district because of the amazing teachers, leaders, support staff, and parents, families, and kids in this district. Thank you very much.
As is the case with every public meeting, we have the opportunity for public participation. If anyone is here for that public participation, I'd ask you to find Dan Goldman. Raise your hand, please, Dan, and submit your name, and then we'll invite you to the podium. I'm gonna ask, and then if I pronounce this incorrectly, I'll ask to be corrected, Marek Hazan?
Yeah, Marie Kazan.
Marie Kazan, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah. A lot of the folks here, some of the folks here might know me as Mark Kazanov. When I was going to school here, had a couple teachers in the crowd and know Dr. McGowan. Yeah, I just wanted to propose an agenda item of talking through ChatGPT and all the kind of advancements in AI that have happened over the last month. I know there's a lot of schools beginning to talk about how to implement tools like this into curriculum, and so would love to have more discussions with the Brighton School System on how to maybe implement this or even developing a task force over time to begin to integrate these AI tools into curriculum and even creating educational tracks from anywhere from 1st grade all the way up through graduation for, for folks. So, yeah, thank you.
For a board member who might not be familiar with that, do you have suggested resources to just read up on that?
Um, yeah, I have, can definitely suggest resources, can send links where appropriate. So please just give me where you'd like for them to be sent, but basically, yeah.
If, if you send them to Dan Goldman, he could get them to us. I would really appreciate that, because I understood most of what you said, but not all of what you said. I'm not being funny, I just, I just didn't, so I'd like to be smarter.
100%, yeah, and I'm always happy to run a workshop. I run like educational workshops on some of these topics around the globe. So, um, yeah, always happy to hop in and chat through.
That's great.
If you wouldn't mind, and it's great to see you.
Yeah, yeah.
If you could connect with Dr. Rio on the way out the door. I know that she'd probably love to spend some time talking about it from the curriculum instruction perspective. It's actually something internally we've been talking about, particularly since mid-December, when this became such a quick hot topic. I would love to learn more from you and think about the direction that's gonna go for us.
Sounds good. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else for public participation? All right, we'll move on. In the agenda, first, let's get an approval for tonight's agenda. Motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Sue.
Second.
Seceded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from the December 13th meeting. We've all had a chance to receive those minutes and, of course, review them. Are there any changes, edits, or anything else, or corrections, rather, to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes as written for the December 13th, 2022 meeting. Moved by Esther. Seceded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
I did note in the beginning that we are in this beautiful TCMS library. We now have the opportunity to hear from Lou Alimo in regards to the TCMS facility's Improvement Plan update. We've been able to get an update on each of the schools as they go. So I'm grateful to be able to hear regarding TCMS. Lou Alimo. And it appears that Danielle's gonna supervise this presentation, so.
Okay. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to present. This is our fourth installment of presenting the highlights from the 2017 Capital Improvement Plan, again, which was first phase of a multi-year capital investment plan. We'll talk about what we achieved in the 2017 phase, what we've subsequently achieved in 2001, '02 Capital Project, 2002, 2023 work that's pending with SED approval right now. And then Mrs. Edmonds will be able to talk about what her priorities are as relatively new principal to the building and her observations and what she'll be advocating for over her tenure with us here in Brighton. So this is a summary of what we achieved, and Mrs. Edmonds will go through that in more detail. I'll just talk about, you know, kind of the mix of project scope that we're able to achieve. This is the area, which is kind of the crown jewel of the plan, program for this particular phase. Again, Mrs. Edmonds will talk to that. But we tried to mix in a lot of the infrastructure. You'll see the fire alarm system, PA system, so some of our core systems, as well as modernization of our, of our facility. So with that, I'll have Mrs. Edmonds talk through what we achieved and what her observations are about the programmatic impacts.
Thanks. So obviously, you're in our bright and shiny library, and I think I've said this to you before, but years ago, I had the opportunity to be on the interview committee for Mrs. Lambert, our librarian. And I'll never forget that when we interviewed her, the thing that made her stand out from all of the other candidates is that her goal and dream was for the library to be the central hub of the building. And she's truly achieved that and only continues to do more with that, not only with the collaboration that she does with all of the teachers across all curricular areas, but in terms of what she's brought into this space itself. You can't see it right now, but on any given day, there are puzzles out. There are huge coloring sheets for students to be out at and coloring and relaxing. So it's a place where students come oftentimes when they need a break, when they need to decompress and just kind of turn the academic world off for a moment. We have our reading nooks in the back where you will often see students just curled up with a book, reading by themselves. We have areas for students to collaborate. And then, of course, while all of that is going on, we also have classes and students working on assignments, and there's kind of a little bit of everything for all of our students in this place. It has begun, become a hub. I was in with 6th graders all day today, and one of the questions I asked them was, "How many of you have had time to go down to our library?" And every kid raised their hand with a huge smile on their face. Like, they love being in the space. Part of it is the colors and the brightness of it and the nice new furniture, but also I think that the atmosphere that has also been created with Mrs. Lambert and our TAs has really helped facilitate that. So it's no longer, do you remember, like, when we were in school, you went to the library, you weren't allowed to make a sound at all. You had to get your book, do what you needed to do, and get out. It's not like that anymore. Everybody is welcome, and it's a place that students want to be. For whatever reason, they need to be here at, at the time. So it's really, has become the, the core, and I'm, I'm super proud of, of what Mrs. Lambert's been able to do in here. Alongside of that, just behind the windows over there, we have our new library classroom, which is actually not called the library classroom anymore, because it's really become a multipurpose room for us. We have a lot of meetings in there, but we also have, our counselors will do counseling group sessions in there with students. We use it as our restoration room after their student conflict. We do a lot of peer mediation in that room. It's really served us well, especially in times of, no, I don't wanna say crisis. It's not the good word, but we had a big leak in a heating pipe today in Jen Kramer's room. And so we said, "Okay, why don't you just go into room 303 and teach today?" So it's offered us flexibility as we need it. We have continued goals for this classroom to become more of a space for social work and social emotional learning support. So it's continued to be in development, but the great furniture, the brightness of the room, the technology that's in the room has allowed us to use it in multiple different ways. Our art rooms have gotten a facelift as well, and what I can say to you from, you know, having been in there years prior, is that it just feels more organized and there's a sense of, you know, kind of safety and order to the classroom. We have much more storage than we've had before. We've got multiple learning points. You can see with the multiple TVs that allow students to see instruction and modeling as it's going on. It, you used to kind of walk in the room and it just felt like there was a lot of stuff hanging out because there wasn't a place for everything. So all of the additional cabinetry and countertops have offered some greater space and some brighter floors, and new workstations have also allowed students to just feel comfortable. One of the things that I've said before is that when I walk into Ms. Hartke's room, which is the one we're looking at right now, it's like you walk in and there's just this sense of calm, you know? And I think that a lot of that has to do with the instructor, for sure, but I think the space also helps facilitate that. And the fact that we can have people in different areas of the room still accessing instruction from wherever they are also helps with that. The same thing goes for one of our new science classrooms. This is room 463, which was not outfitted as a, as one of our regular science classrooms like all of the others. It didn't have lab stations and lab tables, and it didn't have the sinks and, and all of the necessary equipment to carry out the labs that they need to in Science 8 and Earth Science. So you can see that we've got kind of the flexible chairs that can go up and down. We've got those solid tables that offer a great workspace as a desk, but also function for labs and, you know, pouring chemicals onto rocks and things like that. We've got, again, the central instructional station where students can be on either side of it and see what the teacher is doing right on that, that central area. So it's offered some flexibility to the classroom, some different space. And again, as I said before, just allows students to be in multiple points in the room and not missing out on what's going on. Our PE area, this used to be our weight room. If you were in there years ago, you remember the smell. It's probably still stuck in your, in your nose. But it's nice to say now that it doesn't have that. So this is an area, you can see there are rowing machines in there. It's a multipurpose area. It gets used for yoga. It gets used for rowing machines. It gets used for many of our PE units, and it's just right across from our fitness center, where we've got some new equipment, but nice solid flooring and can support the, the academic units that our students are doing. I know that Mr. Wasserman and the other PE teachers are age appropriately working through kind of CrossFit mentality with some of the students, and this equipment helps them to do that safely. So it's really been a nice upgrade. It's pretty bright down there, too. And because it's all open, it, it, I know I was joking about it, but it really doesn't smell down there. And it used to, which is a terrible thing. So it's kind of nice. New lighting in our gym, which is important for many different safety reasons. The big downfall on the gym lights has been that they're either on or off. There's no dimming, but.
What else?
Dimming.
Activity lights.
Dimming. No, but they're, they're super bright and, what's that? Mood lighting in the gym is always helpful for PE. Cafeteria has been a great space. The addition of the, the pillars, the seating around the pillars has been great for students. We have some low seating around pillars. We have some high seating around pillars. We've got some new tables. Years ago, we used to have those like really long tables, which wasn't necessarily great for conversation. It was great for the two people across from you, but socially, not for a group. So I really love the circular configuration. I think, like, I actually see kids being kids, and it's, it's awesome to see. And the, the brighter colors are definitely an add-on. Our kitchen area, you can talk more about the, the freezer and all of that stuff that was purchased, but our servery is fluid and perfect. It's really nice. Freezer and a cooler. And a kitchen ramp makes things, makes it easier for delivery to come in and out. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. So one of the things that Mrs. Edmonds touched upon, but one of the biggest points of pride with this project of 2017 is the amount of stakeholder input that we received in planning it. So our teachers had a lot of participation. She talked about Mrs. Lambert in here. Really, she was with the architects going through the program, outlining furniture, really had a strong voice in designing the project, same with Mr. Ogden in the, in the new science room, for instance. So that was a point of pride in, in building this really multi-plan with, with significant input from, from different stakeholder groups. So the next phase is the 2021, '22 Capital Improvement Project. So that's one of our annual appropriations using capital reserves. You can see what we achieved in this. This is mostly the roof. And you see from the picture, we touched almost every square foot of, of this roof. What I've highlighted or asked our architects to highlight is some of the sustainability efforts that were made. Every, every capital project, we challenge our architect team to at least give us options for sustainability improvement. So with the roof, they talk about the insulation. They talk about, you know, reducing landfill. So you can see some of the things up there, but that is something that we're committed to in each capital project is seeing and making a business decision, you know, considering what the environmental impact is of, of the capital projects. So the roof was, well, a much-needed improvement. If you ask Mr. Luce, I think he had counted at one point in time, he was up to 43 buckets of, you know, that he had around this building over the last several years with leaky, leaky parts in the roof. I think 43 was the number, but he was, we did this for him, and then he graduated up to the high school, so. So then, 2022, '23, again, is waiting approval with the State Education Department, but you can see what we prioritized in here, focusing on the boiler replacement, domestic hot water. And again, same with this. We test our engineers for improve our energy consumption and the efficiency of the equipment. And we just put some highlights in there, all the way through to the upgrading and the pneumatic controls, so we can have them on the variable frequency drives, again, trying to reduce energy consumption. And also the maintenance, upgrades in the equipment, reduce the maintenance effort, reduce the footprint of the equipment that's there, reduce the amount of equipment. As I talked with the pumps, all things that help our, our maintenance team keep things current and keep things, you know, working and continuity of operations, so. With that, I'll invite Mrs. Edmonds back up to talk about her priorities.
So I sent this over to Lou, and I thought that maybe he would take my last bullet out from it, but he didn't because it was.
Stakeholder input.
Right? So that's what I asked. I, I can't remember who I asked. I said, "What else should I add to this list?" I think it was the APs in the building. And they were like, "Underground parking garage." I said, "Okay, I'm gonna put it on there." So not that I think that's really gonna happen, but as you know, parking is, is a nightmare and drop-off is a nightmare at the middle school just because of the way that we're landlocked. So take that out in just, but really, in terms of, you know, priorities for the future, the first two, I would say, from my standpoint, I know, I think I've talked to you about this before. Those are my two priorities for the building, with the first one really being like, if there's one thing that we can take away from this, number one is the absolute most important. The idea of a secure entry, single point of entry for the middle school is huge. We do have wonderfully amazing security. We have wonderfully amazing attendance clerical staff who do a great job of monitoring who's coming in and out of the building. But more than anything, we really need to have a more secure point of entry, preferably with like a dual-door operating system, where, you know, parents or visitors are let in, and they don't get through that second door until they've shown their ID and gone through our Raptor system and, and all of that. So to me, that's number one and, and the major priority. Going along with that, as you know, currently, our main office is on the, the second floor, really the third floor. And what we'd like to do is kind of bring that down to the main, uh, floor, the main level, so that when visitors do come in, they're coming right into that main office to clerical staff, to administration, right off the bat. And then that leaves us upstairs for being more of a counseling suite and potentially a makerspace area with, with that change in space. We are a little light in terms of the space that we have to support students who are in different levels of need on any given day. And so it would be nice to just have bigger, a bigger space and more options, both for group work, but also for the individual counseling that occurs. Some of the things that are listed on here are also gathered through input with Neil, who is our head custodian. So he talks about the importance of some lighting and flooring being updated throughout the building. I mean, the reality is the colors on the floor are a nice 1980s mauve and teal. But in, what's really more important is that there are areas where the floor is not level, where there's some cracking, and, and we can do some updating of those. The same thing for exit doors. It's, it's, it's not necessarily that they're broken, but as things age, they just don't latch as tightly or as securely as they need to. And we're constantly, you know, doing little fixes here and there to make sure that everything is locked and safe. So looking at ways to, to better secure our, our doors is gonna be important. We have a couple of classrooms that don't currently have windows in them. They have two points of egress, so they're safe in that regard, but they don't have windows. So if there's ever an opportunity to get some exterior lighting in some of those rooms, I don't know how possible that will be with some of the things in the scope of the project, but that's important for us. The windows on the Winton Road side really all need to be waterproofed at this point because they're, they're leaking quite a bit. And our elevators are constantly being serviced, and that's, I know that's a big, big project, but we do, we had one elevator that was down and out for, for a little bit of time. So we've got to make sure, obviously, for students that they're functioning and, and working well. So those are kind of the necessary pieces. We've talked about renovating the fax classrooms before, particularly the kitchen area, more than anything else, to make sure that we're up to par with ADA compliance and, and regulations, but also to modernize the kitchen area and the access to, to ovens and stoves that, that students can work with more efficiently and effectively. And let's see. The auditorium, at this point, we're lucky enough to have the beautiful auditorium at the high school, and so that's kind of become our flagship place for events, which allows us some leverage in terms of what we do with the auditorium. It's not fully functioning at this point for a variety of reasons. So we've talked about the potential of making it a kind of large group space, maybe like a black box theater that has multiple functions. So if we do have musical groups that wanna perform in there or acting groups that wanna perform in there, they can. But if we also need to have assemblies and, and large group instruction, we could use that as well. We don't have a room like 262 at the high school where we can fit, you know, 100, 200, 300 kids in, in easily. So looking at that as an, as an opportunity. So those are kind of our big priorities. I know it's, it's a big ask. There's a lot. We know it's not all gonna happen at once, but those are all things that are on our radar for, for the future, for bettering our building.
I'll just say first, thanks for hosting us tonight. We love getting out to the buildings. This is a bright, great space, so we're thankful to, to be in here, so thank you for that. Great list. I'll, I'll make a note that projects like roofs and things like that aren't always sexy, but 43 buckets around the school isn't great either with dirty ceiling tiles and things like that. So there's a lot of work done on that roof. Lou and the team had to do a lot of chasing with some of those folks to make sure that it got done correctly. And it, some of that work was in some pretty inclement weather, but they stuck to it. So it feels great to have a watertight building, at least on the top. And as you pointed out, with the potential for changing windows, we'll work on the side of that as well. But school's looking great, so thank you. Comments or questions from the rest of the board?
So just one last closing remark is, we've been through each of the four buildings now. Each of the principals have had the opportunity to talk about their priorities. We are working on prioritizing a larger capital project. You remember the slide I've been showing at every opportunity where we have an opportunity for investment, maybe close to $20 million. So we're gonna work on those priorities to develop a plan within that budget. At the next meeting, we start talking about budget, and we'll have our financial consultants there to give the board a better idea of where we are debt-wise, where we are for opportunity investment in capital. So that'll be our next presentation in, in the 17th.
Thank you. Next, we'll start with principal reports, and we're in the middle school, so let's start with Tom Hall.
Thank you, sir. If I wanna wreck anything up here. This is a beautiful library. I will say that. Principal Edmonds. It's a beautiful library, very comfy seats, too. So yes, here we are, back. The Link Crew. If you don't know what Link Crew is, basically, it's a, it's a national organization of student leaders. If you don't know what Link Crew is, basically, it's a national organization of student leaders, juniors and seniors mostly, who are the Link Crew leaders. And we have a chapter here at Brighton High School, which started about six years ago. And student leaders apply, they're vetted through teachers, counselors, and their advisors, Mr. and Mrs. Bonadonna, and chosen to be student leaders to welcome our freshmen into the high school. And they also work with our freshman students on a weekly basis during Link Crew seminars. And this happened to go through during FLACs. Our Link Crew leaders get together with their advisors to learn what the next lessons are going to be for the next session for the freshmen. And coming together, they ask questions, they preview what they're going to be teaching, and are prepared basically for the next lesson with the freshmen. And that will end next week. And then it will be over for the first semester and then second semester, freshmen will start seminars with counselors. Our leadership blood drive. So the blood drives at the high school used to happen even when I was a teacher here back in the 90s and early 2000s, and all of a sudden it stopped. And we usually did them during the school day. Very few students could donate because of their age, or if they did, they'd pass out, stuff like that, you know, and their parents weren't there, so it was really difficult. We maybe collected 15 to 18 pints of blood. And that was, you know, that was a pretty good year. But our leadership crew since December of 2012 has now accumulated 989 pints of blood since 2012, December. All started by a student in our leadership class taught by Mr. Cantz, and he's been at all the blood drives since then. We do them all on Saturdays now. And they took in 58 pints on this particular blood drive in mid-December. So we've gone from 15 to 18 to 58, and they're hoping to bust 1,000 in May when they do it again in 2023. So I challenge any of you who can donate, please come out. It's a great time, and the kids just enjoy seeing you get, you know, hunkered down on the table and poked with a needle. And it's for a great cause, of course. Friends Rachel Club, service club at the high school, does all sorts of service and fun things during the year, invite students who are in Friends Rachel, as well as the members themselves. Cookie making party, they decorated over eight dozen cookies and then ate them all. Close to it, anyway. But several students out, they, Mr. Mitchell provided the cookies, and they decorated their own and then took them with them after the event. But just a nice thing just before the holidays. Also, sounds of the season, you know, pre-COVID, things were wide in existence. We had students performing. Thank you to Dr. Lauber and our music teachers, but she helped organize it. Vocal groups, instrumental groups during passing time. You could find them in all floors of the building, singing, playing in between classes on that Thursday before break. We also brought out our faculty band, play some holiday tunes prior to the day starting. And we got that more cowbell guy over there. It's just a lot of fun. But that was, it was nice to bring it all back. I was in the hallway up near the library, and this was one of the a cappella groups singing, passing time, kids standing, watching, just a lot of fun and smiles. And then all of a sudden, I got a picture of this guy. You know who that is. And one of our cleaners. So just, it was a fun time just before the break and just, you know, it was a great way to send us off into the December vacation. There we go. Technology, we have electronics robotics course. It's been in existence for several years now. And they were at the, they're getting towards the end of the semester course, so they're actually in the midst of testing their robots that they built as part of this. And this particular student had to design a robot that would, that they control with a remote control, program it. They have to take the ball off of the stick without knocking the stick down, and that's the challenge. So they compete. It's kind of like a precursor to any students who might be involved in or want to get involved in robotics down the road, and a lot of fun. Our senior athletic signings are just up and starting. This is our first one just before the break with these four lovely students with scholarships to go off and play at various colleges with various sports. There was a nice write-up, thanks to Dan Goldman and the paper, but to Migna, Celia, Sophia, and Elise, congrats to them. In the new year, the Bruin is here. There it is. We collected applications. We're gonna be interviewing and then having students try out to wear this Bruin costume at a variety of events. It appears we have kind of a small number of student interest. They want the mascot to be at the contest, but I'm hearing nobody wants to really jump into the costume. So I open it up. We're probably gonna have a lot of adult guests taking part, and it's a.
I've been working on my audition video, actually.
Thursday at 3:00 in room 262.
That's both scary and awesome.
Thursday, 3:00 in room 262 are the tryouts. Nate, Mr. Merritt, myself, Ms. Dr. Glazer, the APs, myself, we're gonna be, you know, hearing from the kids and seeing what they have to bring. But we're pretty excited about it. Part of our blueprint initiatives, talking about mental health and wellness, this presentation. We started a new partnership with Strong Behavioral Health. Thank you to all the people, Deanna in particular, and Caitlin, who helped, what's Caitlin's new name? Feeny, Caitlin Feeny, who just got married over the weekend. Appreciate them bringing in Strong. And basically, we have satellite mental health clinics in the high school that service middle school and high school students. But that's something new for us this year, reaching out to families who maybe can't transport students to appointments, and they're at a higher need. They can do it right here now in the school, and it's phenomenal. We've continued with our Bivona lessons that start at the middle school. Our students will be getting them in the middle school and then in the high school at each grade level as we go through the years. But for the high school, that was new for us this year. We continue with our DASSA Brighton Believe presentations. But because of what Bivona does, we overlapped a lot with social media, sexting, you know, appropriate touching, those sort of things at the high school level. But because we overlap so much, we're actually changing up our presentation and doing more scenario-based things. So we're presenting them with, this is a real life scenario that has happened with our students here in Brighton. We don't provide the names, of course, but here's the scenario. What would you do if you were ever involved in this or seen it happening? If you ever watched that Jim, James Cagnone special on ABC, what would you do? That's kind of how we set it up. We don't have the wonderful, you know, actors and things, but we set up the scenario, and the kids have to talk us through, and then we work with them. Counselors, administrators are doing that together. Dangers of vaping, we continue to, we're starting a big campaign of that in the spring, starting up. Counseling groups are well underway. We have almost 60 students from the ninth grade class and 35 to 45 in the other grade levels right now. So that's quite a few students who will meet with counselors in groups. One-on-one counseling continues, restorative practices, we're full go, doing more remediations than we have ever done at this time of the year, even prior to last year. Takes a lot of work, but it certainly shows, gives us a lot of positive dividends in the end. One thing working on with Stacy Kugel, and I think we'll be sharing that with Danielle as well, all those different platforms that parents have and communicating with parents about how to stay involved with their students' education. We're going to be rolling out a parent education guide on just the basic technology tools that you need to know as a parent or should know, from biggest priority to, you know, maybe something minor like Schoology. But school tool, Parents Square, those sort of things, and just trying to be as clear and succinct as possible. And I'm gonna have some parents preview that prior to sending it out. We're continuing to look at the panorama data and how we're gonna make changes to that with our school-based equity teams. And our teachers have looked at that, and our students in Culture Climate Leadership Team are looking at that as well. I'll just bring attention, we have a lot of musical things happening in the month of January. We do have an asynchronous day on that Friday, January 27th. No classes, but asynchronous learning happening at home. And we're bringing back the winter semi-formal dance at the end of January. No midterms, but we'll wrap up the quarter on February 1st. Any questions?
Lot happening, as always. Questions from the board? Principal Tappan.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening and Happy New Year. All right. So a lot has been happening at Council Rock since last I was able to present to you. So the alternative program at Bosie's at Creekside actually came into the steel drum ensemble performance for our second graders. It was like so inspirational. So our second graders, first of all, I think everyone got something out of this. They taught us about how steel drums, where they came from. They taught us about how they are made. We talked about the price of them. That was particularly interesting to the second graders. But then they played a whole bunch of popular music that the students sang along to. Kids were encouraged to sing. The faces on these, I think they were all boys, but the group that was performing loved it as much as our second graders, as much as they enjoyed it. And that was put together by their music therapist, who works with them. But it was really, really great. And our music teachers, Mrs. Grenot and Ms. Davis. So it was a real highlight in December, and we are hoping that they will come back for Black History Month to do it for our entire school. We were getting on their schedule, so we're really excited about that. As you walked around our building in December, traditions were celebrated across the board. And I think what was most striking to me, this particular class is Ms. Bennett's first grade class, but the amount of different ways that were celebrated and how kids celebrated. This was a combined writing assignment that Ms. Bennett assigned to her students to go home and talk to their families about their traditions and where they came from. And as you walked up and down the hall, every single thing that I could think of was represented. And the kids enjoyed it, the families enjoyed it, and it really just was another celebration of the diversity we have and the celebration of how we're all different, but we have lots of things in common. So, and that was kind of across the board. These are other ways that we celebrated and sharing our own traditions. Kindergartners, if you guys remember, kindergartners often did the study of light and how light is used through many different of the holidays. That continues kind of with a different twist, combines with science to talk about the science of light, but also how light is used in many different celebrations. So many different celebrations are highlighted, talked about. They brought in guest speakers to speak about firsthand how these celebrations use the light. And then, remember, the last time I presented to you, it wasn't Thanksgiving yet, so a lot of thankful writing, talking about how students are thankful. The last week of school, a lot of creative ways that teachers continue to motivate our young people to stay engaged in learning. So holiday-themed centers, so this is an example from Mrs. Aiello's class, lots of parent volunteers coming in, but continuing to do math while mixing in some fun and arts and crafts in celebration. So just really great to see kids enjoying themselves, but staying engaged in the learning right up until the very end. Last time I talked about Mrs. Youngman's class, who organized the voting and the election during the election day. They also worked on If I Were the President. And as I walked and read, I would like some of them to be the president. I think they have incredible ideas, and they will represent us well someday. And they then also presented them to the families. Students or parents were able to come in, and students stood at a podium, learning public speaking skills and delivering their addresses as would-be presidents. First graders across the board examined family and looked at the idea of what family is. And again, looking at the different representations of what family can be was really special to see all the different, you know, ways that a family can be defined. And it was, it was great to see that. And then I'm gonna finish the general part of my report. So this is Makerspace Part Three. So if you remember, we as adults did a Makerspace activity, and then we shared it with the students in a very public way. This is kind of Phase Three of that. This is Mrs. Baker's class, who came in with Mrs. Fallon and Mrs. Baker and did the exact same assignment, except that they created a class family book. And you can see students really looking and examining their own faces, understanding what makes them unique, what makes them special, and building those. And they will have a book, just like we have as a staff. And so far, I believe we have about 10 classes that have gone in to do this, to give those students that same experience. And Mrs. Fallon just continues to invite more and more kids in to understand the habits of mind through the hab lab. So it's really exciting. As Dr. Hall mentioned, we as principals are focusing a little bit on each kind of different parts of the blueprint. So this month, we are focusing on mental health and wellness. So we at Council Rock continue to use, so these are some pictures in action. We continue to use restorative circles in our daily meetings in that format. On the right, you can see Dana Peterson, one of our counselors, teaching a second step lesson in a kindergarten class that happens once a cycle. This is outside of our ENL classroom. Lori Molten has a feelings chart to teach students who are learning English, but it also really helps all of us, what it might look like if you're tired, sad, happy, learning about those emotions, what it looks like when it comes to the surface. And it's just a great, great idea of that. And then something that we've kind of informally, but it's taken off. When I first got to Council Rock, so 11 years ago, kind of the norm was you come in and you get your morning bellwork or your morning kind of warm-up, and it usually was very academic. It was always a struggle, and the team started talking about it because the students who got there earliest got to kind of finish it. The students whose buses were late, or maybe they got dropped off late, would never be able to finish, and then it would like kind of carry over, and it stressed some kids out. So we've talked really about kind of a soft opening in terms of engaging kids in critical thinking. So some of the building, some of the learning through play, and this is happening across the board. We have less students who are anxious about coming to school, kind of needing to like get that started. This is like a soft way to enter. So as you walk through our halls from about 8:20 until about 8:35, you'll see a lot of classes doing some of these incredible activities. Students fully engaged, doing a lot of learning, but also having a lot of fun while they're doing it, and then kind of launching into their day. So as I walked around, this just struck me as something that we've really looked at over the last few years. And then upcoming events. So first grade movie night is set for Friday, the 13th. Hopefully, that's not a sign, but it's Toy Story 4 from 6:00 to 7:40. Doors open at 5:30, and then the movie runs from 6:00 to 7:40. The kindergarten was such a great success, I'm looking forward to what first grade has to offer. No school on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. We do have a PTSA meeting with the principal Wednesday, the 18th. And then on the 19th is our incoming kindergarten information night, so for the class of 2036. So not to be confused with current kindergartners, that's not for people who are currently in kindergarten. So Ms. Hatch, it's not for you. It's for those who will be coming. I mean, I don't think so. So we will take people through the registration process at the Council Rock Cafeteria and kind of go through the timeline of those incoming kindergartners, not freshmen. And then, as Dr. Hall mentioned, an independent learning day. And I say that only because it is no in-person school. Schools still continue to take place, just not within our four walls. Students will continue to be learning. Oh dear, what did I do? Uh-oh. And questions?
So as a point of clarity, the movie is not Friday, the 13th.
Correct.
The movie is on Friday, the 13th. It's Toy Story 4.
Correct. Good distinction, Board President Davis. Yes.
Any other questions from board? Thank you very much. Principal Evans.
Nope, hold on, I'm finding it. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. Bill reminded me to speak in a mic, and I'm like, me? Not loud enough? That's new. All right. So this, well, past month, actually, 2022, was the partnership, the partnership together with Modee, I always mispronounce that, but the teachers come from Israel, came for a visit. This is Mayen, she's a PE teacher. We worked, the sort of purpose is to work together to build common goals, enjoy activities with the intention to teach each other about each other's culture. We had a magnificent time with her. We actually are gonna connect with our student council. She's gonna get students in her class as well. There's a big time difference, but apparently they'll come back to school, so we can zoom together. And when it came to visit, that was the chamber orchestra under the direction of Ms. Aishem and Ms. Mas's class, their class did a welcome for all of the participants from Israel. December was also concert time. We had the Red Band. We had the Red Band, obviously with the red blazer. That's how you know that was Red Band Orchestra performed in December. Winter Wonderland around the building. The first picture you see in the globes, it was about if students were stuck in a globe, what, what, what would happen and what would they do? And then the snowflakes represented different in their own, your own identity, that you're beautiful in your own way. And then the last picture over here was a story of the wooly, woolly hat. And it's about that students are special even without their hat. And the students wrote about what makes them special, all the different characteristics, and then they actually created hats to go with it. Of course, it was holiday time, so around the building, you see different holiday traditions. That was third grade's class, the Keeping Quilt. So there are different traditions that they drew pictures and they talked about what their families, how the families celebrate the different holidays, as well as the other picture as well on the other side, was about family traditions around the holidays as well. And then some other learning around the building. Those are ESS, those are autobiographical life maps from fourth grade. And on the other side, they were learning about the three branches of government in one of our fifth grade classes. Our Makerspace is definitely taking off. Thank you, Dr. Rio. We're able to order some new things that's going to be coming in. These are classes that are creating projects using the materials that we currently have. This is the fifth grade class. One of our fourth grade classes actually are creating projects around their science unit, around animal characteristics, I guess, how they communicate. And then they're creating videos around that. So we're very excited about the Makerspace and how it's coming alive. Now to the priority area of mental health and wellness. Our mental health teams are continuing to meet. We have a wonderful collaboration with the anti-racist curriculum. And with that, Keisha's actually working with the mental health team to revise their social justice lessons. And also we're doing restorative circles. We have our brewing time and of course, primary project. Here's just some pictures of sensory walks, mindfulness bulletin board. And then we have two little chairs that are new, you would think so, what is little chairs? The kids are enjoying coming to sit while they're waiting to meet with their counselor or their mental health provider. And lastly, for one of the, no, not lastly, after this video, we have a wonderful partnership with Pediatric Behavioral Health and Wellness. It's a school-based consultation service through Galisono Children's Hospital, where they're able to provide consultations to not only to our teachers, to help with students, but also to our mental health staff. Now, this video, I wouldn't say it was created just for today, but it wasn't. It was for one of our meeting with the, with the principals about what happens when you, with our counselors, what's the purpose of our mental health team. So I'm just going to share a few minutes of it. The first student, you're going to have a hard time hearing because he was very low, but the rest of them, you should be able to hear. Uh-oh, it's not showing up there. Tech help. All right, thank you.
I think counselors are helpful if there's someone to talk to. And if you're sad, angry, and you can, you can let your mom or daddy play games with you. Because whatever your feelings, sad, bad, anxious, or whatever, counselors will make, make solutions to make you feel better about it and fix the problem. Counselors are helpful by talking about what we're feeling and helping to find a solution to find.
Can I restart? I'm sure that school can help make control nice down on the bend and feel.
Counselors are helpful because they are, they are, they can help a kid if they feel mad, sad, disappointed, angry, not happy, and stressed out.
I think counselors in my school are helpful because they help you with like needs that you have or something that you have trouble with. Like if someone's new to you, they'll help you with that.
I think counselors in the school are helpful if there's any drama with friends or other people.
I think counselors in the school are helpful because when you're stressed out or you just need someone to talk to, for instance, my grandmother died in April, so it would help you.
I think counselors are, in the school are helpful because like they help you with like everything you need and like with a lot of drama.
Oh, what I think about, um, I like counselors because I like sharing my feelings with people and I like to be sort of known how I feel, so when I feel that way, you know.
Oh. So I won't play the entire video, but then it goes into talk about what happens at brewing time. And this month, I do have the upcoming events. So committee meetings, ELA and Social Studies is January 4th. We have our multicultural club, that's meeting on the 9th. We have our Math and Science Committee meeting next Monday. Of course, third grade bingo, which has been a hit. The kids love bingo. We have our school-based equity team, January 12th. Fourth grade bingo, the week of the 19th. Meeting with the principal, actually Bavona is going to come in and actually talk about the Bavona lessons that our health teacher will be providing. And then more choir and chamber orchestra to round off January. Any questions?
Very busy month, last month and this month. Good for you, school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Danielle.
Sorry. Thanks for having me back.
To talk about our underground parking room?
Yes. I've been sketching it out while we've been, while I've been waiting. I think I have a plan. I want, I, I'm starting also with visits from our peers in Israel. Noga came and spent a day with us and spent a day at BHS, and it was an amazing day. I, I felt like I was like beaming with pride as I walked through the building and just, we had a nice schedule for her, but as we were walking through, I was like, wait, hold on, I want to show you the greenhouse. Wait, hold on, I want to show you this. Wait, I want you to see this person. Like it was really, really fun to spend a day showing off all the amazing things that we're doing. We also had an opportunity, the picture on the right, all those students had lunch with Noga and myself, and our FACS students actually prepared the lunch. They made pizzas and cake in FACS. And so they put on a really nice spread for her and she shared some information about what schooling is like in her school. And then they had an opportunity to share the things that they love about TCMS with her. So that was also really nice to hear kids talk about the things that make them feel great. Number one thing that they said, every, every student said, my teachers, my teachers, my teachers, my teachers, my teachers. So that was fantastic to hear. And then the number two thing was sports and clubs. So that I feel like, you know, we're doing things well and when, when students can articulate that those are the things that are making them feel good about our building. So that was fantastic. And as I said, we had a nice schedule for her, so she was able to see some of our performing groups in action. She's a science teacher, so we brought her through Ms. Padilla's room. She watched a lesson on chromatography and she went to a sixth grade science class. She also went to Katie Falter's classroom and spent some time there talking with students because of course Katie is going over to Israel in February. So that was nice to hook them up. She also got to see, I'll show you some pictures later, but she went in Ms. Walters' room. The students were making their gingerbread houses in German, so she sat with them and worked with them as they were creating those. So it was a really a great day for her. I think she was exhausted. She finished the day at three o'clock with our book club around environmental impact that she was able to join. So we definitely made her keep busy throughout the day, but as I said, I couldn't have been more proud of the day. And then, all right, I need some help. Let's see if I can get this. Do I have to just extend it if I'm trying to show a video here? Do that. So the first class that we took her to was Ms. Cuccurelli's sixth grade chorus class. And they performed a song that they had learned in Hebrew for her. And they, it's beautiful, I'm going to play it in a second. But what was awesome was that they stopped and they asked her for feedback on, on their accent and their dialect and, and how well they were pronouncing the words. So it was great to hear them go back and forth. And hopefully this will work. So that's just a little bit of what she was able to say. They're amazing, aren't they? They're so great. Ms. Cuccurelli has done an amazing job with them. And what was really cool, she stayed for a while and they interacted with each other. And then about half of the group got up and left to go to their other performing group because it was the day they were supposed to be with them. So, and she said, she shared with our students that they don't have any performing groups in her school at all. So the fact that we have students, you know, we have 92 students in our sixth grade band and that students can do more than one, participate in more than one performing group, she was floored. And the kids were too, to realize that like what they have is not what everybody else has, the experience. So that was a great start to our day. As I said, a wonderful visit all around. And, I struggle with the technology. That brings us also to concert season. So like French Road, we had all of our concerts take place in December, some of them at FRES. Thank you for hosting us. And some of them, of course, at our middle school. And as I said, 92 students in our sixth grade band. It's just amazing the numbers that we have and what they can do so quickly and so early in the year. And I think that it was Ms. Lamb who said, these sixth graders first learned how to play an instrument online through COVID. So the fact that they were able to come together and, you know, just a, a year after kind of finally being together and perform the way that they did, all of the groups, it's just amazing. I love, I love seeing them in action. All of our groups performing. Here are some of the gingerbread houses that I talked with you about. They had a big voting. And I think the one on the right wound up number six, I think, is the one that actually won the competition. And we had, the week before vacation, we had the Rochester Fencing Group come in and work with our students in PE class. So that's one of the, the neat things, there's so many great things about our PE teachers, but they, they never kind of stick with the status quo. They're always thinking of new ways to get students involved. And you'll see a lot on Instagram, they're bowling, they're doing all sorts of things that we never did when we were in school to keep students active. And so bringing in the Rochester Fencing Club and, and having the students participate, you could see their faces, like they just had so much fun with those foam, you know, what do they call noodles or whatever they are practicing with each other. So always looking to, to meet students where they are and get them engaged and exciting. And then the other side of that is going through the classrooms, and we have quite a few teachers right now whose, whose APPR goal is around visible thinking strategies. And I know we have some math teachers who are doing a book study on visible thinking in the math classroom. And they just changed the entire setup of their classroom physically so that they can engage students more with whiteboards and being up and showing their thinking as they walk through math problems and math equations. And then this is an example from Mrs. Parks's classroom where she had students, they were preparing for an exam on ancient civilizations. And she had them go through a lesson where they had to write down everything they could remember from the lesson. And then she had them meet with other students and they all kind of shared and they underlined and circled new thinking that something that they didn't write, that a partner wrote down and vice versa. And then they came together and they had to make a visualization of all of their key concepts. And then they had to present it to other students and they did a gallery walk. So these are the kinds of things that we're seeing in classrooms, like students are not sitting by and just receptacles that are having information thrown into them. They're making meaning, they're engaging, they're up. And this is all around the work that Maria Hewitt has done, Rio, and also Julie Kopp. So it, it's great to see it taking off in social studies classrooms. We, our sixth grade ELE team is also working on incorporating visible thinking strategies into, into their unit studies of, of literature. So it's, I don't know, like I've, I've seen all that work over the years, so it's really cool to see it in action in class and to know that visible thinking allows every student an entry point to the content, no matter where they are. So it doesn't matter if, you know, they're an advanced learner or a student who may be struggling with some concepts, it allows every student an entry point and to be able to participate. I'm so proud of the work that the teachers are doing around that. It's great. We have Mr. Elkins, who is a new technology teacher with us. He's teaching eighth grade technology this year. If you remember, Alex Elkins was a student here years ago. I taught him when he was in eighth grade. I don't feel old at all. But anyway, he is, it's, it's been really awesome to work with him as he works through his projects because he can articulate so clearly how every single lesson builds on the previous lesson. And so with this, this was a lesson where students were just, just learning how to dabble with the CAD software. And they were, they, they went and they picked just a design, an icon that they liked, and they had to figure out how to, to design it in the CAD software. And then they have, this is like really thin plywood, but they were able to print it using the laser printer. And now all of that work that they used with the, the design software, they're going to apply to their CO2 cars that they make. So like building on each step, he's adding one step in each lesson. And what's really important with him is that students always have something to walk away with. He feels it's really important that they're not just dabbling in the software and learning these skills, but that there's a tangible piece that they walk out with, even if it's just something that the, the laser printer or the, or something else that's, you know, printed in five minutes. He always wants them to walk away with something tangible. But I've really enjoyed, because technology is not my world at all, like, you know, that kind of technology, I've enjoyed watching how he sequences his lessons and gives students the hands-on opportunities. Of course, we had our holiday festivities. You probably saw our flash mob and, you know, another shout out to Jess Padilla, that was all her. She begged me last year in December to do it. And I, at that time, I just said, Jess, I just can't, like, I can't take on something else, right, at this point? Please don't do it yet. So she was relentless and came back this year and she got teachers involved and students involved and so fun, so, so fun for everybody. But we also had a little holiday competition in our building where teachers could do all these different challenges and earn points. And then there was a winner, Jess Padilla was the winner. So she decorated my office. That's what, that was one of the challenges, was to like decorate somebody's desk. Every day I came in that week, there was something else on, on my desk that she decorated. They had to take pictures, like a silly picture with a colleague, with Brian Darling. They had to dance, do a dance, like a TikTok dance and videotape themselves with students. So just all things like that. And we had quite a few teachers who really had a lot of fun with it, but Jess went, you know, above and beyond. So super fun. Mental health and wellness, I've talked to you a ton about our WIN and SCL Wednesdays. We're continuing to gather student input on what those exactly should look like. All student input has been really, really super positive and staff about having the homeroom at the beginning of the day and win with the same group of people and same teacher at the end of the day. The teachers and students really like that bookend, a nice way to ease in. did go up from the spring quite a bit, and will continue to hopefully grow in that area. We're continuing with our weekly, what's the Bruin doing? So every week, every week, we recognize a teacher who has done something above and beyond, and we recognize them in, in the building. We have our counselors supporting the Bavona lessons, like at the high school. Our counseling groups are up and running, social workers are involved in those as well. We have developed protocols to allow for community building at all building level meetings, whether it's a team leader meeting, a faculty meeting, principal advisory committee meeting, we always have some sort of community building built in. We had our holiday party and scavenger hunt. The, the student union did candy grams, which was really nice to see the kind things that students wrote to each other, and they're also working on, right now, they're starting spirit days that will go all throughout the rest of the year, and they've created like a student passport book that, for each day that they, they dress up for a student spirit day, they get a check, and then they'll get prizes for, you know, whoever's competed, you know, whoever has participated in the most spirit days. Teachers are invited to do that as well. We've added some committees that we haven't had at the middle school, so the principal's advisory committee and the culture and climate committee, which has allowed for more parent and student voice in what we're doing. I've talked to you a ton about MTSUS and all of the work that we're doing there. Cookie exchange with the faculty was great, and then of course, our flash mob. So all of those things are helping with both student and staff, mental health and wellness. January's Poverty Awareness Month, we're looking at the possibility of doing a shoe donation for this month, where we are working with an organization that collects shoes and repurposes them to, to families in need, but we're just exploring that at this point. We have some of our basic meetings, PTSA meeting with the principal is next week, School-Based Equity on the 12th, Solo Fest is on the 21st, we have our Pizza and Jazz district-wide on the 24th, but it is that time, where on the 24th is also our Five Go Six Parent Orientation, so incoming sixth graders. And then our 809 at the high school is on the 26th. We have an activity night coming up, and January's going to go quickly, I can't believe that it's January already.
It is, and is with the other schools, just a ton of activities. Thank you again, by the way, for hosting us tonight, we're glad to be able to be here. So questions for Danielle? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Danielle.
We now have some first read policies to go through, I'll, I'll first list them, then I'll call for a motion to approve, we'll have a discussion, and then we'll take a vote. So approval for a first read for three different policies, policy 8110, instruction, curriculum development, resources and evaluation, policy 8320, instruction, textbooks, library materials, and other instructional materials, and policy 8330, instruction, objection to instructional materials and controversial issues. So we'll first do a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Sue. Discussion. Dr. McGowan, do you want to lead off with a couple of comments, and we'll see if there's questions from the board?
Sure. Excuse me, sure. These, all three are being recommended by the Erie One Policy Service to be updated, really to clarify definitions with each policy. This is certainly an issue that school districts' boards are facing across the country, and they've recommended language to simply clarify exactly how materials are chosen, what the definitions for, for example, controversial issues may be, and what the process would be to oppose those, appeal those, and then clarify that for folks. So we're taking a look at the language internally as well, and may have some modifications to further clarify how one makes that objection, and then what the appeal process would look like around that once a decision is made, and certainly may make revisions and suggestions to you before the second read.
To your point, this is a first read, we'll have a second read and approval on the 17th, which is two weeks from today. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. McGowan in regards to the first read?
It's not a question, but a comment. I think that this is a, these are nicely fleshed out, especially in comparison to how the policies read now. I think it's important that they be updated, but also just be more explicit about how we make some of our decisions.
I think that's a great point. I would say just for clarity that anybody who may be reading about this afterwards or viewing this now, this is not in response to a particular review, a particular issue, nor is it a desire to change what our approach has been, but to further clarify that, and frankly, the board has been very supportive of children having access to materials in school that, and this hasn't been a place where there has been a, what I would describe as a significant issue around materials. We've had conversations with folks before, and I say respectfully that we've had discussions and even disagreements over materials, but that the district has been, I think, very supportive. Our librarians and teachers have felt that way as well. So in no way is this a policy direction looking to limit the materials that kids have access to, but rather to provide further definition. So, thank you.
I'll also note that we remain open and welcome to feedback for people to air their points of view in a respectful manner, of course. Other questions? Again, this is the first read, we'll have the opportunity to vote on this for a second read as well on the 17th. We do have a motion to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, for the consent agenda, I don't know how late Chipotle is open, however, the Brighton Boys Swimming and Diving Booster Club is doing a meal there tonight, if you happen to get over there right after this. And also, the senior student council has a Chipotle event, but that's on March 8th, so you can put that on your calendars now if you want to grab a lunch or dinner there. Also, I have on here a field trip approval, which was the Model UN trip to Syracuse, which we know, by the way, was successful, that was in December, just didn't fall right with our meetings. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Honor?
Second.
Seconded by Esther, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other topics or items for the good of the order? I will make note that this is, as I said, our fourth school trip, and we are always grateful for the tech support team, which includes Mike over my shoulder, Bill over here to my left, and our student volunteer who has agreed to help out tonight, Evelyn modeling some great Chuck Taylors, which were actually sneakers when I was young, just want to note that. But want to thank all three of them because they do all the setup and then they do all the breakdown afterward. So again, round of applause for them, appreciate their work. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.